Okay, we'll call the meeting to order when everyone rise and for the invocation. And with Pastor Russ Winn with the Springs Church, would you please come forward?
This evening, I'd like for us to recite the Lord's Prayer. So if you know that, please join with me. Our Father which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Counselor, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, I will, Your Honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberties and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh?
Here.
Councilwoman Martin?
Here.
Councilwoman Slakta?
Here.
Mayor Nelson?
Here.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Here.
Councilman Longheart?
Here.
Okay, Councilman Simmons is at an important family event tonight. His daughter's graduating, so he will be here later on if he can, so. Good luck to him and his daughter there and everybody. It's a great, great time for him. All right, hey, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mayor.
Welcome, welcome. And we are at public comment on agenda items. Anyone wishing to speak to an agenda item and agenda item only, please come forward.
Okay, good evening, Rick Steinmeier. I've got a couple of things I'd like to comment on. One is the Lee County Sheriff's Department Agreement, I believe, is the best thing the city has ever done for the people of Bonita Springs. If anybody remembers what this place was like in 99 or 96, when we were the murder capital of Lee County, this has really worked out well.
It wasn't that bad.
I really appreciate the Sheriff's Department. It's been a real good agreement. And we, and 7C, the Fourth of July Parade, which is a fabulous tradition that's gone on here in Bonita for 45 years or better, and it says that we're going to revitalize Old 41. Well, back in 1948, when my grandmother and her daughter and her daughter's husband, the master chef, invested on Old 41. They bought 150 feet and a little restaurant called Yankar BBQ, and two houses behind it, and expanded it, and it became the Golden Anchor. It won the Silver Spoon in 57 and 58. When the dog track opened up, Bonita was really on the map then, with the Wonder Gardens, the Shell Factory, and the Dome, which was owned by the Wonder, by the Shell Factory, was a juice and gift shop. And the Seminole had an exhibition across the street from the restaurant. It was really boom time, boom time. And between 45 and 55, the population of Lee County quadrupled. So let's go back to the good old days. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And welcome home, Rick.
Hi, Deborah McLean, publisher of The Banana Peel. I'd like to publicly thank zoning member Pete Pistori for the one single nay on the car wash. The car wash is going to be located just south of the Imperial Bridge on New 41, next to the Monstrosity Storage Bin Unit. The Public Center for Bonita have just renewed that whole area. They tore down the jewelry store and put in the chase bank. We are trying to go upward mobility. There are traffic problems with the boat ramp. There are traffic problems with the storage monster, and there will be horrific traffic problems with a car wash. There is no light there, and there can be no light there. It's too close to the bridge. So I want you to either pull this and look at it again for those reasons. The other thing I'd like to talk to you about is the zoning board and how these things happen. I would like to recommend Richard Lundberg from District 6, and for James Worcester from District 4. With regard to the house on Hickory Boulevard, although I don't like areas to be overbuilt, this particular is a single-family home. It is not commercial, and I see no problem with a variance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else this time, please come forward on any agenda item.
Good morning, Greg DeWitt, District 2. I want to speak and approve, for approval of the Fourth of July Parade on Saturday, July 4th. I just want to remind everybody that this will be the 57th annual Fourth of July Parade we've had in Bonita Springs. I'd like the board to approve this. The other thing is, is that the fire department took it over, the firefighters took it over right around 1990-91. So we've been conducting it for the last 20 some odd years, and in the last 12 years, we've partnered with the city to do it. So I vote, my opinion is to go ahead and close the road for that day. And if you've got any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Rosemary Putnam, and I would like to speak about the rotaries, or roundabouts, or whatever else you would deem to call them. I am from the Northeast, as Peter Simmons spoke about before. I have a great problem with these, as I spoke to you about. I did go to the fire department today.
Yeah, ma'am, this is for agenda items?
Isn't this on the agenda?
And if you wanted to talk about something in general for city, there's nothing on the agenda for that. But if you'd like to talk about that at the second public comment, you could then.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Council, John Pano, CGT Kayaks. Just wanted to say that I'd like to speak on Agenda Item 7C, and how much I support and how much we love the Fourth of July celebration, especially this year. We're right there at ground zero, and we plan to be there and celebrating with everybody else. I'd also like to speak on Agenda Item 7D. We really appreciate all the work that the city has done at River Park, and we'd like to help. So we kind of thought that this would be a good opportunity to bring more people down to River Park and be aware of the park and enjoy the park. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Good evening, Caitlin Weber here on behalf of the Conservancy of Southwest Florida.
Hello.
We're here to speak on Item 12C. The Conservancy is here to express our support for the city's efforts concerning the use of hydraulic fracturing and other well stimulation techniques within its jurisdiction. The Conservancy supports the right of local governments to implement more stringent standards such as this to protect its citizens. We believe this ordinance to prohibit well stimulation is the most effective way for the city of Bonita Springs to manage this activity, especially since currently there is no state permitting process for well stimulation, and consequently, local governments could not initiate a local review process, a local permit review process. Additionally, the ordinance should define well stimulation in a way that captures all well treatments which involve the injection of hazardous chemicals targeting the rock formation to enhance oil production. In Florida, hydraulic fracturing has been used to fracture rock formations to enhance oil production. Acidizing treatments are also used, which involve the injection of the same fracking chemical additives to dissolve the rock formation rather than fracture it to enhance oil production. All of these treatments, fracturing and acidizing, should be successfully captured in the definition of well stimulation included in the ordinance. We support this ordinance as written and request the council support its advertisement. We commend the city for taking this additional step to protect its citizens and the water supply they depend upon. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak on any agenda item, please come forward.
Good afternoon, my name is Ralph Brooks. I'm a board-certified city, county, and local government lawyer. I'm here on behalf of the Conservancy of Southwest Florida to express my support and my personal support for any legal work and comments on the ordinance as you would go through the first and second reading. I have been an attorney practicing in this field for 25 years. My undergraduate degree is in marine geology, and I have been working on the Golden Gate Oil Well Permit Challenge, as well as the Hogan Fracking Well and the litigation that's come and spun out of that case, where a well in nearby Collier County had hydraulic fracturing go on, and the company had ceased doing that now. So we encourage you to be proactive and go forward with the two public hearings on this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Audrey, he just volunteered to give you free work from attorney. I've never heard an attorney do that before.
He actually did. It's in the green sheet.
No, he didn't say free, though, did you?
Free to you guys.
Ah, nice. Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward on any agenda item. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and proceed to the consent agenda. We don't have any proclamations nor presentations today. So, Counsel, we have A through F. Take a look at them very carefully, see if there's anything you wish to have pulled there. If not, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second by Mike. Anything else, any comments? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay, we are at item number eight, first reading of the following ordinance, and there is no public comment on this particular ordinance.
That is correct. This is not a land use ordinance or is required to have public comment. This is an ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs relating to the city's seal prohibiting the unauthorized use, providing for conflict inclusion and code severability, and providing for an effective date. This is the first reading of the ordinance. The second reading will be heard on June 17, 2015, beginning at 9:00 a.m. in these chambers.
Okay, Counsel, do you have any questions, comments? What's your pleasure? Want to send it through first reading?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Okay, and let's see, now we have item nine. First reading of the following ordinances, and there is no public comment on these as well.
That's correct. These are zoning ordinances, and it's required before we go to the second hearing. This is a zoning ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida, considering a request by Victor and Valerie Zabowski to grant variances to reduce street and water body setbacks for a single-family home on land located at 27795 Hickory Boulevard, Bonita Springs, Florida, providing for an effective date. This is the first reading. The second reading will be heard on June 15 at 9:00 a.m. in these chambers.
Okay, Counsel?
Move to the second reading.
Move to the second reading, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to move to a second reading. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Okay, carry on.
Thank you. The next ordinance is a zoning ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida, considering a request to rezone 1.07 more or less acres of land from commercial C1A to Commercial Plan Development CPD to allow a car wash facility on land located at 27731 South Tann Miami Trail, Bonita Springs, Florida, 34134, providing for an effective date. This is the first reading. The second reading and public hearing will be held on June 15 at 9:00 a.m. in these chambers.
Okay, Counsel, would you like to send this to first reading?
Send it.
There's a motion, there's a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
And item 10.
Okay, we have a first reading of the following ordinance. It was advertised legally sufficient. The affidavit of publication is with the city clerk. I'll read the title block and to the record. This is an ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Lee County, Florida, extending the territorial limits of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida by the annexation of unincorporated tracts of land owned by Asteria Bay Marine LLC, Donovan LLC, and Sugar Mountain Development LLC for Phase 2, also known as Weeks Fish Camp, lying contiguous to and being in the same county as the city of Bonita Springs, Lee County, Florida, located in Section 7, Township 47 South, Range 25 East, 30.51 more or less acres, assignment to City Council, District 1, and providing for an effective rate, effective date. Sorry. This is the first reading. The second reading will be held on June 17, 2015, at 9:00 a.m. in these chambers.
Okay, Counsel, do you have any comments or questions before we go to public comment? No? Seeing none, is there any member of the public wishing to speak to this ordinance? Just this ordinance only? We'll close public comment. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Want to send this to a second reading?
Listening.
There's a motion.
Okay.
A motion to send to a second reading?
And I'll second.
And there's a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Anything else for us, Audrey, there?
No, sir.
Okay, now we are to public comment on any city-related item. Sorry to interrupt you last time.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Rosemary Putnam, member of Bonita Springs. I have a real concern about these rotaries, or roundabouts. Due to the narrowness of our roadways and the close proximity of both of the roundabouts or rotaries, both in the area in which we have walkways to schools, one going to Dean Street to the elementary school, and the other one to the middle school at East Terry, West Terry. Both would involve roundabouts, both involve school crossings. I personally don't think those are the areas to have roundabouts. Coming from up north, roundabouts are very confusing to adults, more confusing to the 16-year-olds who are just getting their licenses, or 17 or 18-year-olds. How many of you are from up north, especially in the Northeast, where these roundabouts are prevalent? The rest of you are not. Most of them are at an area where there is a large roadway coming down from a bridge area down onto a straightaway. Here, we're in a small area, narrow roads, which you don't have. My concern is with the safety of our fire department, police department, trying to get around traffic, trying to be able to manipulate large trucks. We have large trucks trying to get to small businesses, and with the, what you have described as a median in there, how are these trucks going to make turns? How are the fire trucks going to be able to manipulate around the median areas that you have? I understand that there's been a developer from Boston that has just bought up a large area behind the Speedway. He's bought up 1.4 acres of land there. He's been bought up an area down near the river. He's going to develop four stories there. How are they going to be able to get in to fight fires if we have these rotaries there? It's going to delay their ability to get to these areas. Where's all this money coming from? Could somebody answer that question for me?
Sure, in a minute. After we get done, we'll go ahead and answer that for you.
If this were your money, would you be spending this money on this, where right now we have a straight flow of traffic? I just don't think it's a safe thing in this area at this time, or any time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Hello.
Hello. I'm Rhonda Lyle Vahan. I am a lifelong resident. I am a former business owner along Old 41. We built the property, well, we bought the property there because I believe in Old 41. I always have. That was always my downtown. Of course, being born here, we didn't have I-75 or New 41, so that was my downtown. I'm very affectionate toward it, nostalgic about it, I should say, and I'm very, very, very excited about these improvements. However, there are a few things that I have concerns over, and I think some people share my concerns. And it's primarily, for me, it's the medians. I wonder how the medians will affect the businesses. I wonder how the medians will affect our Fourth of July Parade, as he's just said. This one will be our 57th. Hopefully, it won't be our last, but I don't know how we could have a Fourth of July Parade with the medians there. Secondly, the art league shows, how would it affect that? And finally, Laura Taylor had talked to me a few years ago about maybe creating a bridal district there with horse and buggies and things like that, and also holiday in the park. They also have the horse and buggies, which the children really, really, really seem to be excited about and love. And as a horse owner for most of my life, I don't believe that 11-foot with a median in the middle with cars parked along the side right there, I don't think that would be very safe. So that is basically my point, and what I would like to do is encourage further discussion. We have only one chance to get this right. We've been waiting for this for a long time, so I want a wonderful downtown, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else this time, please come forward on any city item.
I'm David Gallagher from Cedar Creek. Last year, I had the opportunity to participate on the famous now Bonita Springs Water Task Force, and the product of that task force was 35 recommendations, and I'm concerned they've fallen into a deep, dark hole. I don't see any discussion, any action going on. Recently, we did have one recommendation that was rejected by the council because it was perceived as being more of a developmental standard rather than a water improvement goal. However, I believe the council needs to consider some of the other recommendations. As you may recall, I stood before you last winter and the spring talking about two of the remaining recommendations, number 15 and 19. They're highly important. They're vital to our view of what's going on. We need to take action on 15 and 19. 19 proposes the creation of a water modeling tool that would serve as a decision-making tool to allow us to better understand how proposed water projects would impact our local area. I fully support contracting out for the creation of this decision-making tool. In fact, to obtain a balanced approach to understanding the impact of watering issues facing Bonita Springs, the council should also fund and internal efforts to develop an existing public's work model. The objective would be to have two models, just like a hurricane tracker. We'd have, you know, Alternative A and Alternative B. If they both agree, that's good. Recommendation 15 advances the idea of identifying existing sources of water monitoring data that affect the Imperial River watershed. This is the data needed to run the models. The efforts would also identify what additional monitoring stations are needed to measure water quantity and quality improvements. According to Kevin Erwin, the cost of establishing and monitoring 50 stations on a monthly basis for one year is somewhere in the vicinity of $50,000 if volunteers are used. The task force work should not just be filed and ignored. I spent too many hours sitting here trying to do something smart. I hope that one of our council members can take the lead and add an agenda item next week, next month, to restart the council consideration of task force recommendations. I would also urge the council to ask staff to report on the status of their decision-making tools, and what data they have or don't have, and what data they need. Recommendations 15 and 19 make a lot of sense. Let's get them done and get them right. It'll help us make decisions about all the other alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Deborah McLean, publisher of The Banana Peel. I'd like to take David Gallagher's statements and enhance them. We have since found out that we have serious lack of knowledge at the Southwest Florida Management District, and serious lack of knowledge statewide as to pollutions into the Florida aquifer. I suggest we monitor and model as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Yes, Alex Grant. When I was former member of the City Council, I was also the liaison between the City Council and the Fire District. And there was an article in the newspaper on Sunday, May 31, in the Fort Myers News Press that was erroneous, that said we need our firefighters, signed by a Terry Murphy of Bonita Springs. And what, there is a great deal of confusion apparently among the public that believes that the fire department is actually controlled by the city council. This is not the case. The Fire District has its own board. The citizens of Bonita Springs elect that board, just like they elect the city council. But those are two different entities with two different budgets and two different areas of expertise. I have in front of me the Bonita Springs Fire Control and Rescue District Audit for September 2014, and I would like to have you, you have a copy of this, and I had written in a comment area to you to pay particular attention to certain pages in that document that was done by, I believe, also your auditor, too, to show exactly how much monies the fire department employees get. And furthermore, I do have a copy of the annual report, so you can see how many calls the actual firefighters do per, in other words, per year. And you have to remember, there are three different shifts, and if you look at that, if you look at this carefully, you'll see that on the average, the fire depart, the average firefighter attends 16 structure calls a year, six vehicle fires a year, three water and high-angle rescues a year, and 100 traffic accident year, per year, and 14 brush fire calls, and seven trash fire calls a year. So I'd like you to keep that in mind, and please respond to the people in Bonita Springs, telling them that you are not responsible for the Bonita Springs Fire and Rescue Control District. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. And people do get confused with that, so thanks for mentioning that. Come on up, Fred. Next speaker, please.
Well, I am from the Fire District. Didn't, but I didn't come to speak on that. I wanted to talk about David Gallagher's comment. I do think that the water monitoring and the modeling is probably two of the more important recommendations that would be worthy of being adopted at this point. There's a little confusion on modeling. It's not, no one's going to develop a new model. It's been represented that way, but what it would mean is what's called validating. A model is a computer program that would like, there's models now that have all of southwest Lee County. It was, that study was done by South Florida Water Management, Roger Kopp, and you have another model that was done for the city for your stormwater management. What's done in this is you take the data from the monitoring, which would be done for a year to two years, and you tweak those existing models so that for the DRGR, it would replicate the actual data that you're getting from the monitoring. It's what's called validating the model. FDOT does that a lot with the sound modeling for the sound walls. So I want to make that little point. I am in favor of that. I think it's a good thing. I think another thing that would be good would be to aggressively pursue funding to purchase land from willing sellers. And the other little side comment, I know that if you look at the runs that the Fire District does do, that we're pretty much, percentage-wise, what percent are fires, what percent are car fires, structure fires, rescues, and all that, is pretty much not much different than it is in most cities. The number, the total number is obviously different. If you take New York City, you're dealing with hundreds of thousands. Here, you've got 5,000, 6,000 a year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time on any city item, please come forward.
Hello, I'm Roxanne Newman, and I live in Marbella. Thank you for...
Thank you for letting me address you all. I just wanted to reiterate some of the issues and concerns that some of the other residents have already spoke on. The roads, the roundabouts, the median, the traffic, what about bike lanes? Another issue that is so precious and in my heart is the Fourth of July Parade. It's so well-attended. I've been going to it for, well, I don't, since the eighties. I'd come down and visit my parents and always did it around the Fourth of July. It's a Norman Rockwell painting on wheels. It's just, the quaintness of the town, it's just a wonderful thing. And I would hate to see that be altered or changed. I did call the Fire Department, and I spoke to a nice gentleman there, expressing my concerns about response time if there were roundabouts. How much longer would it take to get a fire truck around a roundabout? Maybe not one, maybe two roundabouts. I would think it would delay the response time, and they do an awesome job right now. There's another thing that, this may sound a little picky, but I live in a condo. We have a architectural review board. I mean, we have to get flowerpots approved. You know what I'm saying? I'm looking at the article that was in the spotlight last month about the design of the building that's going to go where the Bamboo Village was. It's my opinion, that is not in keeping with what Benita Springs downtown area looks like. It just looks like, I don't know, it just is not fitting with the rest of the design of the bill, of the buildings downtown. I would say also, my husband and I picked Benita Springs for a reason. We didn't want to be in Naples. We didn't, we didn't want a town that looked like downtown Naples or downtown Fort Myers. It's the quaintness of Benita Springs that is so endearing, I think, to so many people. And yes, your redevelopment ideas are moving in the right direction, but there are some things I really think need to be addressed. And I haven't talked to anybody that likes the roundabout ideas. I'm a Jersey girl. I guess you could tell by my accent and the speed and the pattern of my speaking. You can't do that around a roundabout. The roundabouts are going to slow traffic down. We've talked about school buses, school kids. We've talked about the fire engines. And I would just really like you to reconsider. Thank you so much for allowing me this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Good evening. Dennis Gilkey, Benita Springs resident. And just real quick on the Old Forty-One, I'm very supportive of your efforts to move that forward as quickly as possible. The funding is very creative, and I think we've been waiting for this, as we all know, for many, many years. I think it is time to step back and take a breath. What you're hearing tonight is programming questions. Having been a developer for thirty years, I'll say, here's the process. Programming, planning, design, construction. And I think what we did is went from design, and let's go to construction. And now we say, what about some of the programming that may not be as good a fit as what we thought? And maybe those things such as bicycles and roundabouts and school kids and maybe some horse-drawn carriages, maybe some, some things that would be very critical if we lost, like the Fifty-seventh Annual Fourth of July Parade, that maybe can't fit down that, that road as well or at all. So, I think, you know, it's time to step back. I think we just need a workshop. It's probably not in this kind of forum. It might be in the kind of forum we had with the DRGR meeting, where we had a workshop meeting where people can have dialogue and interaction and still have the videotaping and all. Or maybe it's just with the staff. But I think the, the issue is, we need to just step back before we pull the trigger on the construction. I know you need to get that fixed price, get that done, kind of get that to your baseline. But step back and just make sure that we haven't overstepped what really is important, which is the first step, which is programming. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Dan Hershens in Avonlea Drive, Benita. I guess my thirty-some-odd years as an academic and a dean, I don't mean to lecture, but we've got to have some definitions here and some better understanding. The only similarity to me between a roundabout and a rotary is they're both round.
Very good.
A rotary, and you can tell, obviously, I'm from the Northeast. I mean, if you haven't figured it out by now, you're not listening very carefully. I have quite a, quite a dialect, I know. We have rotaries all over New England. I always figured out that maybe the way it happened was, because it is an old area, you know, there was a construction company, A, and a construction company, B, to build a road. One would go twenty-five miles, twenty-five miles, whoops, they didn't meet. So, someone said, "Let's make a circle, and that way we'll be able to, you know, get traffic through." The whole point is, a rotary is for through traffic. Cars are going faster, they're wider, they're bigger. And I heard someone just say, "Well, your roundabout's going to slow traffic." Yeah, you're right. That's exactly what they're supposed to do. I'd like to see downtown Benita Springs become a destination point. And if I have to go through, if I want to get from point A to point B, I have Imperial Parkway or I have Forty-One. I won't go downtown area if I don't have any business there. So, there's a difference, and that's why you're not, they're not interchangeable. So, the, the reference to rotary and roundabouts being the same, they are not. Take my word for it, just Google it, and you'll see the difference. And there were quite a few articles you'll find online. So, again, I, I support the revitalization plan for the downtown area, including the roundabouts. Go to some towns that have the roundabouts, and you'll see exactly what I'm talking about. If there was no other way to get from one, from, say, Benita Beach Road to, say, Forty-One, then I can understand. But there are alternate routes. And trust me, a Fire Department, God bless these guys and gals, they'll find a way to get through, and I guarantee you, they won't be slow, any, any slower than what they are right now. And so, therefore, I just want to say to people, please understand, if they're going to use terminology, please make sure you're using correctly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time on any city item? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Terry Lohan. I'm just come here to talk about, you know, the same thing everybody else has been talking about, in support of the, the business owners on Old Forty-One and, oh, I guess I've got to talk into this thing a little better. But, yeah, just in the support, because a lot of them, you know, talking to them, they didn't know everything that's going on with the, especially with the median, you know, the roundabouts. That's the two main issues. Exactly, I mean, everything else is, you know, better than, making Old Town Benita better is, you know, is, is a good idea. But I think we just need to think about it before we make a final decision and, you know, get everybody and maybe have another workshop and get all the business owners to have a say in it. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Good evening. Rex Sims. We're celebrating our thirtieth year on Old Forty-One, and we've waited for thirty years for this to happen. We've been through several dry runs before. The CRA in the nineties was very effective. It was a homegrown project. It was all done by local input, local funding, and the local people paid the bill over time. We also were instrumental in, in organizing this city. It was a grassroots organization. I made speeches all over town. You'd be surprised, we had people that were objecting to it. It was the greatest thing that's happened to Benita Springs in a hundred years. And so, I look at it now, and the thing that bothers me about where we are right now, it was all sprung on us with no input from anybody there. It was from people who just visited the area. And I believe that there's a lot of questions still remaining that need to be resolved. And I personally would ask you to, let's have a, one more workshop and iron out some of these details before you put the ink on the line. Because once you do that, it's there for fifty years. And hopefully, we want to do it right this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Good evening. For the record, Kathy McGrath. And I think most of you know, I've owned property here since nineteen sixty-seven. And we built Nelson Plaza on Old Forty-One. I'm not a business owner now. I have a lot of friends that have businesses there, and I understand their concerns. You know, it's always easy to give advice and suggestions when it doesn't affect you. I'm so in favor of the revitalization. I was part of the Old Forty-One Business Association years ago. I wasn't part of the CRA. My main concern are the medians. I have to admit on record, I'm in favor of the roundabouts. My feeling is this, as a speaker said, took the words out of my mouth, I've said all along, this is what we want, a destination not to go through. Right now, there's too many people utilizing downtown Benita to get from point A to point B. And there are other ways to get there. You always can be creative. During the season, I found a creative way to avoid Benita Beach Road. You can learn. I think perhaps the suggestion is, do we look at some of these situations again? If it's possible. I don't know how far it's proceeded, whether you can or cannot. But again, I know people who have gone up to the Sarasota Roundabout, and they didn't want them, and now they want more. I, like I said, I know the concerns of my friends that have businesses there, and I really do sympathize with it, so I'm not going to say anything more about that. But I do, I do want us to go forward. However, I am concerned about the medians. I think there's another way besides, except having medians, I think there's some way you could define, it is a narrow street. You could define downtown Benita with paper block or something, where there's not a dividing thing, because it is going to be a problem for the parades. Now, I think one of the people that spoke that was designed, was part of the design project, said that they had spoken to the Fire Department and that they had no concerns. I don't know if that's true or not. But anyway, thank you for living, letting me speak.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time on any city project or item?
James Adams. I own the Sure Unity Salon right there on Old Forty-One. Just that, we met, a bunch of us, owners up and down Old Forty-One, and just wanted to express that we're all for the revitalization. But I, I think that there's kind of a, I don't know, that we, there's another step that needs to be taken so that we, as existing business owners, kind of know a little bit more about what's going to happen. Because now we're hearing things about, this exit's going to be closed. You're not going to have this to be able to come into your existing business, and that exit's going to be open. And, I mean, there's a lot of, I think, problems that maybe went from the, the people who were designing it that didn't really, they're, they're not from the downtown area. I, I'd been there for five years, and to see us close the, the road down for the parades or for the art fairs, we deal with a lot as a business owner. You know, we're lucky, we're right on the corner. But if there's a roundabout there, I'm not for sure how they're going to close that down and how accessible then we're going to be as a business. And, you know, that costs us money anytime that people, we can't get in there. But as a business owner, and I know there were several other business owners who were expressing some of the same concerns. So, I'd just like to say that we would like to maybe have a little bit more time to talk about and see what we can do as, as business owners. Okay?
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Mayor, council members. My name is Anthony Mietzalillo. I have NAI Realty. Been acquiring a few pieces downtown. Very impressed with what's going on in the city. I think it'd be wonderful. But there's a couple of things I just want to talk about. First off, I've heard people say here tonight, well, people can find other routes, or people can go other ways if they're just cutting through. Well, if they're just cutting through, they might stop and buy an ice cream cone. There's a simple practice in business. Traffic equals sales. Nobody builds their business on a back street where nobody goes by their store. We want the most people to go by these stores. Second, taking the time, I'm, I'm a bit hoarse. I was in the hospital up until three days ago, so excuse me, my voice. I've taken the time to walk around downtown and talk to the other businessmen. The roundabouts are, mm, but the medians are a disaster. And I think they really have to be looked at deeply again. If I'm driving down the street and there's a median, and I spot a store over there that's selling fishing rods that I might want to go look, am I going to go up and make a U-turn and then come back and find the parking space? I don't think so. The idea in current-day marketing is to get the client in the store and out of the store in the easiest possible method. Now, on the properties I've, I've been acquiring, some have commercial bases, and I've been talking to some national commercial people. And I haven't said a thing about how the streets are going to be laid out in the redevelopment. I mean, people like L.L. Bean and, you know, people I think that'd fit this client and community. And Orvis, in fact, would I think would be the number one with the river. But, you know, you've got to really think about how you're moving people in and out. The whole idea of downtown is a place that creates a, a center for all the people of Benita, but also that can maintain businesses that could survive. And I think the medians are a disaster, and they're really going to cost us tenants. I've also talked to a couple of restaurant owners from downtown Naples that I was involved with when we did the redevelopment down there. And I want to tell you, I, I may be new to Benita, but I used to live on Avonlea Drive where that other fellow lived. But I, I'm living in Naples now. But I, you know, I worked on the Joe De James Plan, which was knocked down for the Jackie and Terramian Plan. I was the one who brought in Larry Warner to be the architect for Joe De James. And I worked very closely with them. And now Joe is working with me on what I'm doing. Everybody believes in Benita. Everybody believes in the community. But they don't want to see it be an ultra-modern, road-divided, other than what it is now. You know? People want to keep that sense of community in place. Even if you walk down the street now and nothing's been redone, people talk to you. They say hi, and they're friendly. It's a nice place to be. We have to enhance that and bring more people there. More people equals more sales. Okay? So, I think that the plan is not ready. I really don't think it's ready. I think it takes more work. And I think all the downtown businessmen have got to come up with something they can agree with. They're forming an organization now, and I think that's a great thing. Maybe they'll have one voice instead of many, and maybe they can agree on what they really want. But I really think you have to look at putting the skids on this thing for a couple of weeks, having another workshop, getting everybody involved again, and getting a baseline that everybody's happy to work with. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Sam Richardson. I am the owner of Fidelity Florida Realty in Benita Springs.
Can I, now, have you talk right into the microphone? There you go, Sam.
Usually I have a big enough mouth that everybody can hear me with the mic.
There you go.
Okay. I'm the owner of Benita, of Fidelity Florida Realty in Benita Springs. We've been here since nineteen sixty. I'm the fourth owner. I'm next to the park, next to Al's Bike Shop, next to Mike. And I, I don't want to seem redundant here, but there's a lot of stuff that's been said. These are business owners. We're, we're there every day. So, I, I understand it's different to put a plan into motion when you, when you have it on paper and you can see it from above, but to sit, and you're welcome to come hang out in my office and just see what happens downtown. Who gets lost down there? Who's having fun? Who's playing in the park? You know, these are the things that I don't think that you can show on paper. There's been a lot of calls for people to kind of, let's take a second look at this and just breathe one more time. I think that's an awesome idea. I'm going to be short because there's been a lot of good points brought up before. And, and, you know, my father is here, and I was one of his tenants, so, you know, I'm kind of holding the dam back because everybody wants to come up, but I'm just going to be the voice for a few people. There's a lot more business owners that feel the same way as we do, and we would just like everybody just to kind of sit back, take another look, and, and let's, let's regroup a little bit, take some time. Let's not be so hesitant, you know, let's not be so hasty to write those big checks out and, you know, take a look downtown again, give us another shot, and get us involved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Good evening, Benita Council. My name is BJ Faircloth.
You just lean right into that microphone. We want to hear what you have to say, okay? It's okay.
I represent one of the businesses, and I would like to say that I believe that a workshop would be beneficial. There's several questions that haven't been answered. According to the website, there would be no entrance into a property that if we remove that entrance, there will be no entrance. So, I think it would be beneficial to be able to get some of these questions answered.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time?
Hello, Mayor, Council. John Pano, CGT Kayaks. We are right at Ground Zero. One of the things I'd like to say is, we are a destination. People come to the Imperial River, they come to the Wonder Gardens, they come to go fishing. They're coming here, and they're coming quite often, and a lot. We also do get a lot of through traffic. I commend the city and the city staff that sat with us for many times to talk and discuss this, and try to figure out how to solve our different problems. I think at this point, the city staff hasn't had enough time, really, to come back with a lot of the information to us. And I agree with many of the business owners that, that we need to have another meeting. And again, I, I'm all for this project. I think it's an awesome project, and I'd like to thank you guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. Sure? No? Okay, we'll go ahead and move along. We are to City Attorney's Report at this point in time. Audrey, what do you have for us? Item A.
Thank you. The first item is permission to advertise the purchasing ordinance. I have Ann Wright here, who can go through and summarize the ordinance. It's also on the second page of the green sheet. She does have a presentation.
A brief presentation. Good evening. Ann Wright, Finance Director. I first would like to start by acknowledging Audrey's effort in leading this initiative to update the purchasing ordinance. And I do have just a few slides to summarize the nature of the changes, more, more, or less highlighting what those changes are. It's really additional language, updating language, providing the information relating to the city manager's authority, relating to purchasing, changes the name of the ordinance to the purchasing ordinance that currently is called the finance ordinance. Updates language for compliance matters that relate-
Ann, hold on one second.
Certainly.
That sound is impatient, Mayor.
You heard that earlier, too.
Yeah, sorry. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Language relating to compliance-related matters, such as e-Verify, certain ethic require, ethical requirements. Updates relating to the processes and dollar thresholds, which I will go over in a separate slide. Allowing for publishing the notification to prospective bidders about bids that we're requesting on our website. Clarifying some language relating to purchases that are exempt under state law. Incorporating the Consultant Competitive Negotiations Act, and adding language that's consistent with the city charter regarding the conveyance of real property, and also incorporate some language that addresses dispute resolution and protest procedures. Two charts, just to walk through the dollar thresholds, changes that are being proposed. A purchase that is $5,000 or less, city employees will, are charged with the responsibility to find the best price. Department managers have that incentive to find the best price, because their budgets are limited, and so that, that's very important to them. So the threshold there is being proposed to be $5,000. It currently is at $3,000. Next threshold in the center deals with a less than or equal to $10,000. That threshold currently is $5,000, and that threshold, if the purchase is less than or equal to $10,000, so it's above the $5,000, but not greater than $10,000, it would require three phone quotes, and those quotes need to be documented, so that we can maintain a history of who was contacted, and what the quote was. And then the purchase would be from the, the lowest bid on that, when it is responsive and responsible bid. The next threshold, then, is anything that is less than $25,000, so greater than $10,000, and less than $25,000 would require three written quotes. The next slide shows the thresholds relating to, or addresses, the fact that there is an exemption within state law relating to professional services. So walking through a matrix approach on whether it is professional services. If it isn't professional services, if the purchase is less than or equal to $50,000, that is within the city manager's threshold, but there would be the request to advertise and receive sealed bids on those dollar thresholds. If it is greater than $50,000, as you're aware, that does come to council for, for final approval. And that's the highlight of the proposed changes.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for, for Ann? And, okay, then what's your pleasure? Council, would you like to send us, for permission to advertise? Mike?
Yep.
Motion to send us a permission to advertise. In a second? Is there a second?
Yes.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Longkart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slacka.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Okay, item B.
Thank you. This is another permission to advertise. This time, it's something that I worked on with Councilman Gibson. This is to amend Land Development Code Sections 2-190 and 2-91, 191, related to the definition of capital improvement for road impact fees. If council goes forward, it will be scheduled for July 1 and July 15, for the council public hearings with local planning agency review on June 11. Let me go through and give a little backup here. Lee County modified their capital improvement back, I believe, in April, in March or April, as its definition to be more expansive, to allow alternative roadway capacity improvements. I did provide a memorandum. I was asked to hold off on, for a while, until Councilman Gibson was comfortable with it. It does create these changes. The city has always taken a viewpoint that if it is a capacity change, in other words, it increases the capacity of a roadway, it's fine to treat it as a capital improvement. This allows a little bit additional, including the transportation vehicles. Now, that is only for capital equipment. Anything that is operation and maintenance would still be in operation and maintenance, which would come from other legally available. Impact fees are impact fees, and those are capital.
Okay. Council, what's your pleasure?
I'd like to grant permission to advertise and move to public hearings.
Permission of my mic to advertise, is there a second?
Okay.
Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slacka.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longkart.
Aye.
Okay. Well done. Go ahead.
The next is an ordinance. Again, it's a Land Development Code ordinance. And I want to point out, I'm going to be bringing at the next meeting another one or two, so that we can maximize our advertisement, all on one display ad, because the display ads are costly. This would be to amend Section 4-1380 to prohibit well stimulation, as defined within the city of Benita Springs jurisdiction. You heard already from Caitlin Weber, from the Conservancy, along with Ralph Brooks, also from the Conservancy. He is the one who I reference in the scheduling document as the legal counsel for the Conservancy. Just to give a little bit of insight on this, originally, we were going forward with a resolution requirement, which is what the state statute has in 377.24. Ralph was kind enough to provide me a copy of Wallach versus Town of Dryden. Previously, I had read a lot of the Colorado cases, the Texas cases, which pretty much said governments are prohibi, or local governments are prohibited. This is a different viewpoint coming from New York that says, hey, you're not regulating, you're just outright prohibiting. Now, we're not prohibiting other forms of mineral extraction. I would not recommend to do that, because Baron Collier has quite a few, along with other entities, I'm sure, too, has a lot of mineral rights. So you really don't want to pick a fight where you don't need to pick a fight. So I would recommend not doing that. I also want to point out, this is miscellaneous number four from the Water Strategy Task Force, which council recommended going forward. I think I have some time on it, but this one will be advanced faster than our time schedule, if council goes forward with this ordinance.
Okay. Council, any discussion? What would you like to do?
Permission to advertise.
Like to advertise, send us to advertise, and you have a second? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slacka.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longkart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Go ahead.
And I just want to point out, I'm going to make a few minor changes to this ordinance. Caitlin was kind enough to provide it. I wasn't sure if I stated that. It's mostly to remove the term fracking. As she pointed out, there can be a lot of problems with that term. And so it's just a cleaner draft, and that'll be forthcoming. I just didn't want to create another draft in between.
Okay.
You'll see a cleaner, that'll be on file with the clerk's office pretty soon.
Understood.
One item that's not on the agenda, I just want to bring up really quick, and I mentioned it in a couple emails to council. And that was, the city recently adopted its election dates following the presidential primary. It's not a city issue, but it did become an issue when I finally got, when I saw the dates that were prepared, the tentative dates. It does require, we do have a resign-to-run issue here, actually in a couple races, and it could be even in more races, because with District 1, some members of the CDDs in Pelican Landing, or whoever else is in District 1 in a CDD, might have a resign-to-run issue. But I also know somebody in Councilman Longkart's district, as well as Councilman McIntosh. The last day to actually file would be Christmas Day, which is 10 days from the beginning of qualification, which is the statutory. Division of Elections has assured the supervisor of elections, so the Department of State has assured the, the local supervisor of elections, that nobody, Ms. Philpeck does not need to be here on Christmas Day. So she doesn't, I mean, talk about a ball humbug. We do not need to change our dates. The letter can come in, we can make, I mean, can make sure, although be kinder if you did bring the letter in a few days earlier. It goes to the qualifying officer of who qualified you for the seat you currently hold. So in the situation of a CDD, it would be, a CDD or the Fire District, it would be with the supervisor of elections, and the local race would be, of course, with Ms. Philpeck.
Okay. Council, you have any questions for Audrey on that?
I do, just very quickly, just to make clear to the public. Audrey and I have been talking about my responsibility to the people who want to run for District 1, and I don't want to hold up any filings, any creation of campaign committees to fill this seat. So my question to Audrey was to get, I asked her to get a, a clear definition of, of whether or not a candidate for this seat has to wait until I resign, have a letter of resignation. Her answer to me today was, she checked with the supervisor of elections, and that's not necessary, so long as, if they want to go ahead and file, create a campaign committee. Am I quoting you correctly?
That's correct.
Am I speaking correctly? So that that can go ahead whenever they're ready to file and create a campaign committee, they can.
And that's correct. Now, they are at risk that if you decide not to resign, that seat won't open up. But if they, many people run all four years they're in office, so.
Just want to make that clear to people who might be considering that.
Okay.
Thank you. And thank you, Audrey.
Thank you, sir.
And nice little, some people perpetually run dig there. That was cool.
Sorry.
I got that one.
I'm not political, I apologize.
No, not at all. Anything else you have for us?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we are to the, up to the City Managers' Report. Carl, that is probably you.
First off, we've provided the monthly financial reports. Any questions?
Monthly reports? No?
Okay, good. Item B is a resolution accepting resignation of two members of the zoning board, as well as needing an appointment of two replacement. The green sheet's in front of you. If you have any questions about the process or anything like that, Debbie's here to answer any questions you might have. She also, by the way, as a part of the errata, proposed a ballot sheet for you to use, but obviously the council can take whatever method you need to make these appointments.
Okay, and Debbie, are we supposed to make a motion to accept the resignation of the, the two first, before we have the election?
Yes, you can do that, or it's, it's also, it's reflected in the resolution.
Okay.
Accepting the resignation and appointing two members.
Okay, okay, so we can do it at the same time. Okay, and Council, you all have the, your little ballot piece of paper right there? And, and I think, Debbie, what you said, you're going to choose one for your first choice, two for your second choice, and, is that correct?
Correct. And the first person would be, term would be till 2018, and the second choice will be 2016, to fill those two terms, the remainder of those two terms.
And so the way it's going to work is that we're going to, whoever comes in first gets the first seat, whoever comes in second in the election, we're all going to vote at the same time, with the same ballot. That's the way it's going to work. You get it?
Yeah, one means that's the higher rating, and you're not going to add them up.
Yeah, you're not going to add them up, no. It's going to be whoever gets the most votes, right? Whoever is first.
If we, if I marked one, would you count that as two? Because I, I want that person to have the longer term, and then the other person only gets one, so that way you know who.
Yeah, I think you're on, you're on where I was going. If you want the person to have the longer term, it ought to be a higher number, so that you get to add, when you add them up.
I don't think that'll work. I think the only way we can do this is for everybody to vote for two people, and you're going to, whoever gets the most votes gets the, the first seat. Whoever gets the, the second amount of votes gets the lower seat. That's the only way you can do this.
We have a tie, we'll-
All right, so we're voting just two people.
Yeah, yeah, just, just make two marks on there.
I'll make my mark.
For two different people, probably be a good idea, too. Is that right? Is that, did I get that right?
And make sure you put your name on it, so we don't have a secret ballot.
It'd be written, the mayor did something right, maybe. Okay, two marks, put your name at the top.
Did you prename them? Did you give them the ballots?
Everyone has a ballot.
And they are public record.
Yeah, we got it.
There you go.
And if you like, while Debbie is adding that up.
Oh, and before we do, Debbie, could you read the names of the people whose name is on the list there for us, so everyone will know who's our, who our choices are?
All right, Mr. Nelson?
Oh, or Audrey. Just read it.
The first one is, I need you to vote one and two. You voted one and one.
I did, too.
Why do you need, you do not need to do that.
Okay. We have Dennis Adams with-
Attorneys.
Dennis Adams with District 4.
Right.
Richard Lundberg, District 6. Robert Sharkey, District 3. Alan Glazier, District 1. James Worster, District 4, and Stephen Kissengers with District 3.
Great, okay, thank you. And go ahead.
I was just going to say, while they're adding that up, I'll just add one more item under the city manager, and that is, in response to the folks that you heard from about the recommendations from the Citizens Water Strategy Task Force, that green sheet has already been prepared for your next meeting. I kind of wish they would have gotten in touch with me first. What we've got prepared in a draft of the green sheet and the backup material is with the city manager and with the city attorney right now, so it will be on your June 17 agenda, I think it's 17. What we're doing is, we're bringing forward a resolution, so that we can move forward on some of the recommendations, about seven of the 29 recommendations that we identified as short-term. I've also included the matrix that we talked about, that again lays out all 29 of the recommendations, the responsible entity, the kind of action you can expect, and the timetable for seeing those move forward. And I've also included a summary of some of the other ones that we're working on, so you get a status idea of the ones that you're not going to have in front of you, where they are in the process. So hopefully, a lot of this confusion, if there is any out there, will be cleared up at your next meeting.
Good. Any, any questions for John?
Why wouldn't you just have the, do 15 and 19, as has been requested by someone in the audience, as opposed to coming back with a slew of things?
Well, again, 15 and 19, the one about monitoring, collecting data, and then modeling with that, those were identified by the task force as obviously high priorities, but all of them were high priorities. They, they did not indicate that those were the highest, and we also indicated to you that that would take a little more time, because both of those require RFPs to go out, to get professionals, to bid on it. The process has started, but they're not something that we can do internally ourselves. The seven that you'll see, that we are bringing forward, are ones that we can actually start the process ourselves. They involve partnering with some other people, but getting the ball rolling, and we don't have to go out for bid. There's also budget ramifications, for example, on the RFP for monitoring, and that'll be part of the budget process talk. So again, the summary, I think we'll lay out for council where we are on the whole broad spectrum of the 29 recommendations.
And, and at that time, at that meeting, you have a chance, opportunity to debate whether you, you want to circumvent that process, or whatever council wants to do.
Council, that's up to council, obviously. We're just trying to follow the process that was laid out by the task force, and then adopted by council at previous meetings, but if you want to change it, that's, that's obviously up to you.
My, my personal point of view on that is, I would like to see 15 and 19 as a beginning. We don't need to have, because there's a lot of things on there, and we'd like to be able, does the council do that? Be a thorough examination of what you're going to bring to us, so that we can vote properly on it, whatever the- so that we can vote properly on it, whatever the choices are.
John, could you, for Bill's benefit and everybody's benefit, could you go ahead and be prepared to let them know what it would take to go through that process?
Absolutely.
Okay, in case they wanted to do that. All right?
May I?
Yes.
This regarding the one-two, and just going by each one getting two votes. Mr. Worster received four votes, so he will go to December 31st, 2018. We have a tie with three votes, and that is Richard Lundberg and Mr. Kissinger, Stephen Kissinger. If you guys could decide which one, he will, whichever gentleman gets the second choice, he'll get December 31st, 2016.
Would you like to prepare us another piece of paper so we can do that?
You can do that one by hand. It's just two people. It's two people. You can't do that by hand.
Good Lord, I can't get a piece of paper out of you?
Mayor, while they're doing that, I have one more thing, and that is, I thought that I would answer the question raised by one of the residents with regards to where's the money coming from for downtown. And the answer to that is, half is being paid for by the city, and half is being paid for by the county. So it is a partnership over a long period of time in order to make that happen. But it's a rather unique agreement, as council knows, and it's been in place for a couple of years now. I know some people are concerned about timing. We do have some timing constraints within our agreement. All of our, whatever we decide to do, have to, all those projects have to be commenced by, within four years of the signing of that agreement. So that's where the money's coming from.
Oh, yeah, good. Thank you.
And that is all I have for the manager's report.
Okay. All right, and while we're waiting for this last one, we'll go ahead and go to Mayor and Councilman Ryan. And we'll just start down, Steve down there, what have you got?
Are we going to have a discussion about the questions that so many people are about a workshop?
I'm thinking so, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, yeah, we'll take care of that down the way down there. But we won't, we will have that conversation before we're done here, okay? Unless you want to have it right now.
I would like to have it now, if you don't mind. I'm sorry.
Go right ahead. No, go right ahead.
No, I, I think for the public, need to know that on behalf of the council, we had the city staff go back through every business owner, every property owner, and solicit questions and look for issues that were there. And you can tell the difference between the 30% and 60%, and yeah, there are still issues. I think it's unfair that people come up and say, well, the business owners weren't notified and weren't told. I think that they have been. If there are questions and we need to answer them, I know Carl has sent out an email today that I think attacked or addressed all those issues. Is that not correct, Carl?
Yes, sir. We had the benefit of some of these thoughts over the weekend. I condensed them and basically have submitted them to the development team to make sure that everything is addressed. And that everything is addressed not only thoroughly, but also in a language we all understand, as opposed to tech talk. And the consultants will be working on that. I have asked them for kind of a draft of that, maybe as early as Monday. Hopefully be able to release this as early as Tuesday or Wednesday of next week. And those are all the issues. Every one of the issues raised tonight are issues that are already addressed on that list of questions.
I wouldn't, as much questions as about this, I don't hesitate to have another meeting. That's not, that's not my concern. My concern is, everybody says one more meeting, and that's, if there is one more meeting, then that's fine. But if this thing carries on, ultimately, we don't have the maximum guaranteed price, and we don't have the opportunity to work through the budget. So we need to get it settled. I'd certainly put it to council to decide if you want to have another meeting or not. That's up to you. I think there are enough concerns, but I don't know how much education we need to do before people finally say, I get it. You know, we're not going to have everybody happy, but we're going to do the best we can.
Well, I think what we saw here, and I understand when people have concerns, but what you saw were concerns. What you saw were concerns. I mean, so far as, and believe me, I've been involved in a few pretty terse conversations and emails when it comes to this kind of stuff. You know, I'm kind of guided by expert opinion when it comes to traffic and roadway design and that type of thing. Not that people are infallible, or the people that we hire are infallible, or the consultants are infallible. They did what they were supposed to do. This was sprung on no one, I don't think. This was sprung on no one. Everybody's had a chance to comment. Everybody's had a chance to get their concerns addressed.
Just select one, right?
What has happened, though, is that in the end there, I think the consultants, in some of the cases, they just didn't agree. They said, well, I know you have concerns, but this is not going to be a problem. In order to create in a 60-to-70-foot easement, and to go ahead and be able to create that sense of place, to be able to create a downtown environment, to create a safe, walkable environment, to slow traffic down, and to do all the things, to create a business district, right, where people are going slower, where they can see the sandwich signs, where they can see everything. This is what, this is what they've come up with, and this is what they feel very comfortable that people will safely be able to do. So far as the, you did come up with the questions for them, and they're going to answer those questions again. But you know, some of this, it feels to me like sometimes that it's really easy. I don't know if you've ever heard of the science of doubt. It's really easy to create doubt in the minds of public. It really is. It's so easy. It happens all the time. I see, you see it on news all the time. You can create doubt easily. Which, what is even more difficult is to, is to set that doubt at ease. It's really hard once that doubt's been created, because what they have is that, people are telling me that this is bad. It's bad, it's bad. And no matter how many times you have somebody say, no, it's going to be fine, it's hard. It's hard to do that. I think we are on step 50, and regardless of how, these are great people, they have concerns, but that's asking us to go to step two. I mean, you know, we got, we were able to get to step 50, and we were able to do it by consensus building. That's what you're supposed to do, is build momentum, build consensus. And by the wayside, some people's concerns, yeah, we've, we told you a couple, two or three times, it's going to be all right. This is the way it is, this is the way it is. And you're not going to satisfy all those. And you know what? If you go around the neighborhood and you make enough people mad and you scare enough people, you're going to get a crowd full of people here. You're going to do it. And you know who wasn't here? All the people that wanted to express their support. You didn't see him there today, did you? Because nobody went to scare the hell out of them. Anyway, go ahead.
The majority of the people that were here and did talk were people that do have businesses down there right now. Somebody that's trying to make a larger development down there. And it seems like the consensus of most of it was the median. I would like to take a second look at it, especially the median. And you know, you're right, we are at step 50, but we went from step one to step 50 really quick. You know, the whole process, I thought it was going to be more of, okay, they kind of brought out a plan, and we get to vote on, do we like the roundabouts? Do we like the medians? Do we like this? Do we like that? It was just like, okay, you have to vote on the whole thing. So I liked the majority of what was going on, so I voted for the whole thing to get to the 60-point. And then, you know, at the 60-point, a lot of minuscule changes were done, but nothing, you know, drastic, not what everybody was bringing up. So I mean, I think we do need to have another look at this and look at individual pieces, you know, is this okay? You know, what's the effect of this? Because I don't think we really had that much input on, it was like, oh yeah, this, you know, a beautiful thing, you know, it looks great. But we didn't, you know, have somebody come in and say, okay, you know, this median's here, this is why it's here, but this is what it's stopping, you know, this is what it's going to hurt. Like the gentleman said, Anthony, I would butcher his last name, Mazaloozo or something.
We know who you guys are talking about.
You know, like you said, you know, people are driving, you know, they see like, oh, I want to stop and have ice cream, or I want to buy this, I want to buy that. There's a median there. People are inherently lazy, so you know, you can't turn right into the business. You're going to go down the street, and then you're like, all right, am I going to fight to make a U-turn and get back? And you're going to lose business that way. So I really see the medians causing problems. And not only with just going into businesses, but the firemen. We're only going to have an 11-foot lane, and you have a fire truck or a police car coming behind you. We've been taught to stop, pull over to the side of the road and stop. There's an 11-foot lane, and then there's parallel parking. There's nowhere to pull off to. And now there's a median. How's that fire truck going to get around you? So instead of stopping, you really need to go. But in our minds, we've all been taught, pull to the side and stop. So how are you going to change everybody to say, hey, you need to go until you can make a right and get off the road so that truck can get around you? So I think we need to look at this a little more.
Okay, Bill?
Thank you. Well, I think Michael said it eloquently in so many words. And I think as a common courtesy to the people that are here, the business people that were here tonight, that a workshop of what was suggested, I think, is the proper way to do things. And I realize I also voted to go forward. I'm not suggesting, I have a different point of view on that. But I really believe that, that the points that were made are valid, and it's not like we're going to take a long time. We're just asking for a workshop, not in the city chambers here, but maybe at the fire department, the same one we had for the water task force. And they all said, they all said, it was up here, that they want to, they're for the improvements and all that, but there's some tweaking, or whatever way you want to express it. But the medians, as Michael's talked about, are genuine concern. And why not? What is the big deal? Why do we have, why can't we just allow this to happen? We're not going to change the, we're not going to change doing it. We're just going to have more thoughts on it. And maybe with bringing them all together, the professional team that's going to be doing the work with these people, perhaps maybe they may come up with some insights that they haven't prepared. And if they had, and if it doesn't work, we're all, I'm still in there, just to go with it, and so is Michael and everybody else. Please, please take that.
Here's a suggestion. Oh, here's a suggestion that I'll come right to. Is that Carl has that list, and that list is a complete list of what everybody had, it was. He's the great prognosticator here. And so you have that list, and you're going to give that list to consultant and give him a chance to address them and give them back to council members. And perhaps if council looks at them and goes, this doesn't answer the questions at all, then perhaps you may want to have a workshop. But if they answer those questions in a real meaningful manner, and it makes sense to you, you may want to go ahead and carry on. But that's just my idea. Go ahead.
Thank you. As you know, I carried the pom-poms for this for a long time. It was the platform that I ran on for becoming a council member, was the revitalization of downtown. But I'm glad Carl sent those out. Some of those concerns on that paper were my concerns, too. They were ones that were giving me that little bit of a, eh, you know, like I don't know the answer to that. And I want to get the answer to that before we go forward. And seeing that many people come out tonight, just reiterated in my mind that there's still questions, and we need to get this right. It has to be done, that we all have a little bit of comfort. And I'm glad you sent it. I wish we had an answer for tonight to be able to say, hey, I got the answers to those questions today, and we could go forward. But there's no way that I want to say, no, stop the project. But I need those answers so that I can say, we've done our due diligence, and those questions have been answered. And I feel extremely comfortable to 100% that this is what we need to do. So I want those answers, and then go from there.
And I don't think anybody's saying stop the project, so.
So I think a few people said it tonight, slow down.
Well, slow down, not stop.
Slow down, well, that's.
Take a look at it.
Pretty much stop. But anyway, yes.
Yeah, I thought this was behind us already, but, because I remember, I remember Arlene walking up and down Old 41 and talking to different businesses and all that, and I didn't think there was much of an issue at all. Maybe one or two people, but that's what I remember. So I'm not really, with all due respect to the concerns out there, I'm not really in favor of going backwards. I don't want, I don't care about a workshop, but I think going the route that you said, Mayor, about having Carl get, give the contractors the information and get it back to us, that sounds like a good thing.
Can I ask Carl one question?
Yeah.
Carl, if we did, if we did post for a workshop, it's probably going to take two weeks to get it out and advertise and so on. What's that do to the budget? What's that do to our, our bid process? Where does it hold us up? Does it hold us up?
It basically delays the development of the guaranteed maximum price. Obviously, some of these things are relatively minor things, I know important to people. But I'm saying in terms of the actual construction itself, they're relatively minor. However, if you're talking about redesigning the road, taking out the medians, things like that, that would be a major adjustment, so it would, it would cause a delay in the guaranteed maximum price and delay of construction, okay? That's just kind of a fact of what we're looking at. Now, we could probably go ahead and allow the contractor to start on the bridge, because I've not heard difficulties with the bridge improvements proposed while we were working the balance of this out. But again, you won't have a guaranteed maximum price until the contractor understands exactly what the project is going to be.
But let's say if tonight, we, ah, we need to stop and slow down and wait until we have a workshop and this and that. Whatever work, the right construction and the consultant and all these people that work for them, that stops. Right now, because they're not going to continue to work on a project that they have no idea if what part of that's going to be pulled, what part of that's going to go on. It stops, right, right then. So I, I mean, that's it. I mean, I, I think it's, I would think it would be a prudent thing to do to find out if your questions can be answered by a simple letter. If they can't, have a workshop, but then figure out, what do you mean by workshop, too? You need to figure out, are you asking for another presentation? Are you asking for the consultant to come up here? And so you can ask them questions. Are you asking for another thing that we had tonight where there's public input, and they ask questions, and the consultant answers one? You've got to figure out what kind of format you're thinking of, too, what you mean by workshop. So I would suggest, if you can, if it can be answered by, maybe it can't. Maybe you get the answers back, and you're like, I don't believe any of that. So I mean, whatever.
May I ask Carl one more question?
Yeah.
Obviously, we have a record of who spoke tonight, who had concerns. And if your letter back to council addresses those concerns, can you make sure that those concerns are addressed, so at least we know at next meeting whether or not we've been able to address, deal with those? And are they, are they kinds of things that we can practically deal with and resolve? You know, I see some people sitting in the audience tonight who didn't speak, who I'm sure have, still have concerns about it, because I've been told they do. So can you make that kind of an effort before the next meeting to at least try to get those folks contacted and understand exactly what the issue is?
Yeah, once we, once we get the information back, well, it would be a pretty simple matter, I think. Or not maybe a simple matter. We can make every attempt to get the information out to the public. And I think there's somebody we could get that to, who could get that, to those people, so.
I don't want to put more work on your back, but there are enough concerns here tonight that I.
Well, no, I have no problem. Whatever the council wants us to do, we will do.
I understand that.
All right. Counsel, what do you want to do?
And I just want to say one more thing. I don't want people to be scared off by the word stop. We're not asking for it to stop. We're just asking, take a step back, take a look at it, you know, and say, what would happen if we changed, if we took out the median? Or what can be done instead of the raised median? Could we just do paver blocks at same level as the ground? So that way, there's a perception of a median there, but you can still drive over it. I don't think that would stop the whole thing. I think it's just going to slow it down, maybe a month. You know, if it takes two weeks to have, hold the workshop, and then have that, and then, you know, at most, maybe another two weeks. That's only a month. It's not stopping. It's a month. You know, like other people have said, we have to live with this thing for many, many years. Taking another month to get it right, I don't think is a problem.
Right, but again, I mean, and you can make whatever motion you want to, but again, if that can be answered fairly simply, the reason why they think that it's important to have a median for the vast majority of that corridor, why that's important, then, then I think that, and that satisfies the majority of you, then why would you have a workshop about it? Because these are pretty, these are, these are engineering and design questions. We all have an opinion about, I hate roundabouts, or I hate mediums, or I won't be able to turn, or whatever. But these are engineering design questions that professionals should be able to answer to your satisfaction. They can't have a workshop.
Mayor, how soon do you think we could get the information?
I don't know. How soon do you think that the?
I'm hoping by Tuesday or Wednesday. It'll be out to you.
That's good.
Okay. All right, counsel, give direction to staff.
My only thing is, if we make a motion tonight to have a workshop, it gets the ball rolling. In two weeks, we can have a workshop. If we wait to get the responses back, and now we have to wait two weeks for the next meeting to make a motion to have the workshop, now it's another two weeks added on. So, you know, just to help save time, I'll make a motion tonight to have another workshop on the downtown.
Okay.
Old 41 project.
There's a motion to have a workshop on the Old 41 project? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's a motion, a second? Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Slackta?
No.
Mayor Nelson?
No.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longcart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Okay, let's see, let's see, it's a tie vote, so it dies. No, aye.
Four-two.
Four-two? I can't count. I can't count. So stop listening to me. What's wrong with you people? Okay, so
So when, when do you want to hold that meeting, and where?
As soon as possible.
ASAP.
Hold it here.
And whatever's a reasonable place to hold it.
Okay? Okay?
Yep.
Can I ask a point just of clarification? Councilman Gibson, I understood you wanted to make that motion tonight in order to change, to save the need to wait two weeks until you came back. Is that still open for change pending the response we get from right? In other words, if the answers from right come back in and appear to be satisfactory, are we still going ahead with it?
Well, I, I think the overall concern was about the meeting, unless right comes back and say, yeah, you know, the meeting's not a good idea, and drops it, then. But I, I think it'd be a good idea to have, to have the workshop, and just so everybody can
Well, well, I, I know we're talking about the medians, but the fact of the matter is that that list is much more expansive than just the medians. They're worried about left turns, no left turn lanes, they're worried about the bus stop and where that's located, and whether there's going to be a pullover or not, they're worried about the narrow lanes, they're worried about having the parade. First off, there's never, ever been any discussion or concern that that parade would not go forward for years to come. All right? So that, that is not an issue here. We will have that parade, given the council's approval. We will continue to have that parade. Whether it can go down that particular area, we'll have to continue to look at that.
If you can drive a car down the road, you can have a parade down there, this isn't the Macy's Day Parade, this isn't the Rose Bowl Parade. I think if you want quaint, you got quaint. And so far as everybody's, you can't go around a circle with a parade, yes, you can. So if you can go through an intersection, you can go around a circle. So anyway, so that's it. That's council's pleasure. You, you want them to schedule a workshop, and you'll be in contact.
We're going, we'll be in touch with council members to try to get some scheduled dates for you, and see what we come up with. Okay?
Thank you.
You can talk to us here in a little bit. Okay? Okay, let's see. You got anything else for us?
Yeah, just to thank you to the staff for a great Memorial Day service. Riverside Park looked beautiful, great morning. Thank you very much, staff. Thank you.
Janet, what do you got for us?
I have a green sheet from, that was posted on the errata sheet, that as of yesterday morning, I was offered the position from the board of the Benita Wanda Gardens to be their interim executive director, and I have accepted that position, which means that I need to, thank you, I need to, thank you. Thank you. But to do that means I need to vacate my spot on the board that you had very kindly sat me on. So according to our attorney, there are two choices here, and that is, one, to let the seat run vacant until election, and then council's pleasure is to fill that seat, or make a recommendation tonight to fill that seat, recognizing that whoever it is, and my site, myself, will be duly noted that there is a potential for sunshine, and we need to behave.
That's a lot to ask.
That is.
Yeah. Well, I'm the sunshine queen, so come on.
Janet, you have any, any idea what you want to do? You don't care?
If, I guess if council's okay, I think that Mike Gibson had, had said before that he would like to serve in that capacity, so I'll nominate
That's a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longhart?
Aye.
Okay. You have anything else, Janet?
That's it.
Okay. Stephen?
Same thing, Stephen. Memorial Day Parks and Recreation, everybody did a fantastic job. Carl, thank your staff. That's it.
Okay. Michael, what you got?
I'm good, thanks.
Okay. Bill?
Memorial Day was a moving experience, it always is every year, for all, for all of us, and the, the work that the staff does is obviously terrific, and all the speakers, Deputy Mayor McIntosh, Steve Slacta, you did your usual great jobs, and it's a pleasure to serve with you. Thank you.
Okay. I just got a couple of things here. First of all, we've been having some, I don't know, should we call them negotiations? With, Commissioner Keiker has been handling the library issue, and library issue by, their, the county has the money to build the library, and he knows that, I let, we let him know, Carl and I, have let him know that his council's desire to have the library put on the site down there behind Bamboo, where the church was. So we've been going through some, some, I would call them rather, sometimes rather terse or confusing issues with that, but we'll be back to, to let you know where we get with that. And we'll, we'll see. We may need your help here a little bit. And some, some other things I wanted to point out in regards to the, the county commission. Today, I guess they voted to institute a new program that they had first described as a new source of, a new revenue stream. Well, it's not. Sorry, it's not. It's abhorrent taxes, that's what it is. That's something that we all kind of use all the time. What they, and then they discovered, described it as like a TIF, but, or tax increment financing, but without the financing part of it. So what they're actually doing is, countywide, including within your cities, that part of your taxes, that growth part, right? In other words, somebody builds a new house. What they're going to try to do, or what they're going to do, and this is policy now, is they're going to track the value of that property before the new move growth was on there, and then once the new growth is on there, that tax increment above it, they're going to gather it that first year, and use that to do infrastructure with. Larry and I have been bouncing, maybe some conversations around about that. It wasn't that I was against people using general revenue to do infrastructure, because everyone does a little bit. Between the 30% we do so far as gather tolls throughout the community, or throughout the county, and the 30% used for impact fees, and the 30% is gas taxes, well, there's a small sliver there that most everybody uses some type of general revenue now and again to supplement that of some type, for whatever reasons. But, so what they have done is dedicate that part of it. The main problem, concern that I had with this situation was that the complexity of it. My, my question to him was like, well, then, if you're going to do that, why don't you just, in the budget process every year, it's a pretty transparent process, the budget process, why don't you just say, we're going to dedicate year to year, we're going to dedicate X amount of dollars to make up whatever shortfall and whatever project we want to do? And so, but the answer was, is because we want to be more transparent. I'm like, well, more complex is generally, by definition, not more transparent. However, and you know how your mayor can get pretty stubborn. But anyway, so, but then, then the other part of it was, is that that won't, that won't be enough money. It, it won't be enough money to do the things that they want to do. So I said, well, you know, you're going to need to have something besides that. So anyway, we're, we're going through some, in, in, on top of that, as I described before, the, the mayors have, have gotten together, and, and they are using this, your money to, to do this with, right? I mean, the, the tax money. It's gathered countywide, it's not just unincorporated, it's through the cities, through everything else. So those are growth dollars. And so our, our answer to the, our, our question to them was like, in impact fees, you, you use that money in the area that you gather it from. Kind of makes sense. If there's growth in a particular area, even if it's a South District, or you split the county in four parts, it should be spent in, generally in that area, because that's where the needs prob, need probably is. They're not going to do that. And they, they, on one hand, want the transparency, but on the other hand, they want the flexibility to use it wherever they choose. So that's, I may have gotten some of that wrong. If so, I apologize. But I, I think it's important enough to where I'd like Carl to have somebody from the county, whether it's Roger or whoever it is, come in and explain to council exactly what that policy is, because it's a little late in the game for me to be grousing about this, but it's not late in the game for us to understand what it really is. So, yes.
Then, of course, they're going to have to wait a year to find out how much the increase is going to be, and they don't even know.
Yeah. Yeah. Right now, it's, it's, but, but you know what? Budgetarily, sometimes when we, we project out that way, we all do some projections, but you know, you don't ever know, so.
If you never, well, that's
Yeah, we don't ever know
That's a business decision you're making. It's quite, quite interesting.
It really is. It is an interesting process, and as, as I tried to explain to him, you're making it with our money, so, but that's all right. It's your decision to make, I guess. So anyway, I'm not trying to start a fight with the county, but I guess I did. Anyway, Carl, would that be okay with council, for us to have somebody come in and try to explain that to us, what they're going to do? Would that be all right? Carl?
Will do.
Good. And, and that's all I have. Any questions?
I did forget one thing.
Yeah.
Something amazing happened in the past few weeks. This middle school just magically appeared on Terry Street. And so I just want to say thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your
Prison, the prison went away, and the school appeared.
It's amazing what you can see without that chain link fence there.
It's weird, isn't it?
It's beautiful there now.
Yeah, thank you. I, I got to tell you, I wasn't even expecting that much of a transformation, but you, you, it's a beautiful school. It's a beautiful school. It's no longer a prison. Well, unless you're in detention, and then it's kind of a prison. Anyway, thank you very much, Mike. That's very nice.
And also, did we ever get the tally on the final vote on the
Yes, we did.
Oh, nicely, nicely done.
James Worster for District Four will fill the seat till 2018, and we have Stephen Kissinger to fill the term until 2016.
Okay. All right. Do we need to have a motion that, that confirm, yeah, we're going to have to do a motion that, that confirms that, and that also accepts the resignation of the other two?
I'll make the motion that we accept the resignations, and then we confirm the vote for replacement.
Second.
And there's a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longhart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Okay, we are to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on any city matter, please come forward.
I have, I have one more item that I had taken off the computer this afternoon that might help with your meeting. It's from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and it does give the impacts of these neighborhood traffic circles, it gives potential impacts, emergency response issues, giving the timing, other special considerations with large vehicles, including school buses and fire engines, and the typical cost. So this might be of help for you to read.
Thank you. Anyone else this time, please come forward?
Yes, Alex Grant here. And you, I, you have, hopefully, this article from Trains Magazine on the heavy passenger commuter rail, and of course, I'm trying to get Amtrak down here from Sanford, Florida. But this is a very doable situation for southwest Florida. Please keep in mind, we already have over a million people, permanent residents in Lee and Collier County. Okay? Now, that's going to grow. This does not include any tourists or any of our snowbirds. Now, that is enough population to be able to support passenger rail service in southwest Florida, all the way from Sanford, Florida, down to here. It's 222 rail miles, by the way. The state of Florida is trying to purchase the right-of-way from CSX, and there is, when I spoke to the consultant, yes, last year, there's an 80%, 20% federal state matching grant, grant to refurbish the track to Amtrak standards. So this is doable. You're talking about trying to put people into downtown Benita. Think ahead 25 years from now. I may not be here, I'll be upstairs, well, there, looking down on trains. But anyway, it's, this is important for southwest Florida, and please get behind your state representatives, your federal representatives, whoever can push a few buttons in Washington to get this done. The money is there, the cost of the, is very minimal, it's $60,000 per mile for the regular maintenance, insurance, and everything else, administrative costs, yearly administrative costs. You would have probably close to 90% ridership in the fare box to pay for this. So it's a very small subsidy of maybe $1 to $2 per resident per year to do this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else at this time, please come forward?
For the record, again, Kathy McGrath, and I'd like to just be the town crier for a couple of minutes before we close. I think it's common knowledge by now that after 33 years, Fred Parton is retiring, and he's been a wonderful, wonderful leader. But I don't know how many people know John Jenkins, who is going to be his replacement. And I've known John for probably over 20 years. I know when my husband, my late husband, was on the board. John was at one time with the Tallahassee Law Firm, and whenever BSU needed higher-up legal help, he was with Bill Sunstrom and that group. And he is going to be excellent. He knows that utility, not only, he knows the utility system inside and out, and has her over 20 years, but he has all the legal experience, too. So I want to welcome, and he's going to take the helm, I think, June 22nd. And the other thing I haven't reminded everybody for a while is the importance of being a blood donor. I'm fortunate, I'm a platelet donor. I go every two weeks, and I don't know if you realize it, but trauma, transplant, and chemo patients desperately need platelets. Now, I know not everybody has enough time out of their life to go every two weeks and sit for two hours with a needle in their arm, because what it does is it separates the platelets and gives you back your blood, so that's why you can do it so frequently. But if you can't do that, at least donate blood. They can, they do two units every time I go, because they so desperately need it. It takes six whole blood donors to get one unit, and they can get one unit, me, in one hour. So if you can't be a platelet donor, at least donate blood once in a while, because you never know when you or someone you love might need it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward?
Just on one particular issue, and if I'm not allowed to speak on the same item twice, please stop me. We can be over processing everything, and I heard about a workshop, and I would hope that the workshop would be very tightly structured, because it's not defined. Does that mean doing what we did 10 years ago? I, I worry, frankly. I get concerned that we had a project 10 years ago, and almost the same process, you know, how, when is a process over? When is a decision final? And when do you move forward? I had never seen such a more deliberate a process in a city or a town that I've ever lived in as what happened with this revitalization project and I commend the board, the council for doing that. Having said that, fine, workshop businessmen or whatever, I'm sure there are some concerns and I'm sure they can be met. But I'm getting concerned again, I really am. I moved here because of the plans for the downtown area. 10 years ago, I built a home here for that reason and I have no regrets, but I'm beginning to wonder, when is it going to be over? I can't answer that question, but you folks there are elected officials, you made a decision a few weeks ago. Everybody was backslapping everybody else. Finally, it's over, we're moving forward for, for the downtown area. And again, I'm just going to end. When does the process end and you decide, you make a decision and you, and the citizens of this city have to understand, you had your opportunity, it's gone perhaps a little bit? Are you going to redesign the entire project? I sure in heck hope not, because you can get to the point where consultants say, wait a minute, what's going on? What are we building here? And it's the old adage, you have a committee to, to design a horse, you end up with a camel or an elephant. So I'm all for process, but we have to get to the point where you make a decision, let us move forward and not backwards. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Deborah McLean, publisher of The Banana Peel, and I too am just tired of hearing